Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Friendswood City Council meeting. Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, February the 3rd, 2020, at Friendswood City Hall, City Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. First thing, we'll call the meeting to order, and I would like to invite Pastor Mike Cervantes from New Hope Church to lead the annification, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from two Girl Scout Daisy Troop, Michaela Daisley and Logan Klein-Peter.
I'd like to invite you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for the city of Friendswood, and I thank you that it has been a light for many years, and I look forward to the many years to come that it will continue to be a light. I pray for all of our leaders, I pray for our citizens, God, I pray for just the communities and the neighborhoods, that God you would stay beside them and keep them safe, Father, and yet in some way, somehow, that you would keep us risky in the way we think in the future, God, that we would make good decisions, Father, that would honor you, that we would use our blessings wisely. I thank you for all the leaders here today, pray that you would bless them, that we might be a blessing, it's in the mighty name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
All right, moving on to communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular city council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. John, you want to say anything? There's no cards. Oh, so sorry. All right, moving on to our work session. Capital improvement projects and drainage update, Mo?
Yes, ma'am. This evening, we'll have Hill Arias, our Director of Engineering, and Samantha Heritoss, our Deputy Director of Engineering, give an update on both subjects.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Colonel Tim, and council members. I'm here to give you a brief update to the cities ongoing capital improvement projects. Please feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. The first thing I have to share with you is the status of the 2018-2019 street maintenance program. The project as a whole is pretty much finished with the exception of the crack sealing of some streets that were a part of this contract. There's about $90,000 worth of crack sealing to be done in areas along streets like Sunset and Melody Lane, and they're actually going to be getting started tomorrow on that. So if you're unfamiliar with how crack sealing works, it's a process where a contractor will clean out cracks on a street using compressed air, and the cracks are filled with a hot asphalctic crack sealer. This is something that's best done in the, I like to do it in the dead of winter when cracks are wide open, and that way you can get the most sealing in there as you possibly can. So I did want to mention crack sealing is one of the cheaper methods of pavement preservation, and it helps prevent the formation of potholes by preventing water from infiltrating the pavement and undermining the road base. Once the crack sealing is done, we'll be asking the city council for final acceptance of that project, and the one-year maintenance period will start at that time. We should be coming back next month, they should be done within a couple of days, hopefully. And that brings us to our current year's street maintenance program. Where we're at on this, the contractor has been given a notice to proceed, and now they're on the clock. During this year's program, the city plans on spending up to $4 million on street maintenance, and this is supported by the city's 3.8 cents sales tax. As spring approaches, you will start to see a pickup in the amount of work that is done on asphalt streets. During this time of year, you're at the mercy of asphalt plants. They're not necessarily open every single day, so it kind of makes it hard to plan sometimes around that. But once the contractor gets rolling on the asphalt streets, the city's engineering staff is going to do their best to keep them going without any major stoppages. There's a little bit more than 10 miles of asphalt streets that are going to be repaired. To give you an idea of what you could expect when it's all said and done, all you have to do is drive down one of the nice, smooth Black Hawk streets that have been repaired in the past year. As I mentioned a little while ago, the contractor has been given his notice to proceed. Along with this notice, we have given them the first list of concrete streets to be repaired. It's important to know that the repair of these concrete streets will be panel by panel, not a complete reconstruction. So if you see your street on that list, it doesn't necessarily mean you're getting a brand-new street, you're getting repairs where it needs it. We're expecting to see the contractor begin on the concrete streets real soon. They initially indicated that they were wanting to get started this week, but some of the weather lately has been holding them up, so we're going to try to get them here as soon as possible. But we're calling every day, telling them, "When are you coming?" And once again, when we get started on the concrete streets, we're going to be doing our best to stay on top of that and keep them going while they're working. On this slide, you can see a partial list of concrete streets that are on the list to be repaired. And as I mentioned, they're done by panels, so the contractor may not repair one spot, may be repairing one spot, then jumping down a few hundred feet to make a repair at another spot. You might see that going on. And I also wanted to mention that the full list of streets currently on the list to be repaired can be found on the city website at www.friendswood.com/construction-updates.
And I would encourage council and members of the public to visit that website. The list of streets is pretty jaw-dropping when you look at it. There are a number of projects, as Hill mentioned, 10 miles' worth of asphalt streets isn't anything to scoff at.
And actually, as I walked into the council chambers this afternoon, I got an email from Brad Whitmire, our projects coordinator, who's been very instrumental in this project, and she let me know that she has also uploaded a PDF of streets also, or a map of streets. So you'll be able to see it visually as well if you go to that website.
You may have also seen a few mayor Mike's minutes published in the last couple of weeks relative to this, the street projects that are underway. This is projects that are funded with a 3.8 cents of a sales tax.
I was actually going to ask that question, I don't want to interrupt you, Hill, but the $4 million, is that entirely the sales tax dollars?
That is entirely the sales tax dollars. So every bit of funding that was generated since 2016 till now has been spent, or is under contract to be spent.
That's money we would have found someplace else in our budget, and so the sales tax dollars are covering it.
Correct.
That's excellent.
So it's important to note that since this is a project based on base bid units, the list of streets that you see on that website today, they don't represent the final list, it's going to grow. In this type of project, funds will be expended as we go, and additional work created and assigned to the contractor. So any new additions to the street list, we'll be posting it on that website. And I'm going to take a little five-second pause here if somebody wants to write down this link right here if they haven't already.
And Hill, I'd just like to ask, that list that you're referring to, do you want to touch on how we came about the prioritization? Or is that later in your presentation? I apologize if I preempted your presentation.
That's a good point. The basis of it is a study from IMS, Infrastructure Management Services. They did a pavement assessment for the city over a year ago, and they assigned what's called pavement condition indexes to all streets in town. That's the basis. And we've used that in conjunction with input from citizens, and we've also gotten input from our public works team, the street and drainage superintendent and his assistant. They've got a ton of experience, and it's been really helpful to have them around to get their feedback also, and their institutional knowledge as well. So it's been a variety of sources, but the main source is the IMS study.
And just to piggyback on Hill's comments, that IMS study used advanced sonar equipment that evaluated not only the pavement condition but as well the subgrade, so that we were able to identify potential pitfalls in concrete that may look fine but had issues beneath the surface of the pavement. Those streets were then ranked based upon their PCI designation, so the worst streets are being tackled first.
Excellent, thank you.
So this moves us to our next subject in the street maintenance. Just wanted to inform you all that the city's engineering staff is currently investigating a pilot program for an asphalt pavement preservation program. What is pavement preservation? It's the work that's done at a minimal cost today to help preserve good streets at or nearly the conditions that you see them at today. This type of program is not for every street, it's better suited for streets with the high PCI values, pavement condition index values. When you end up with a, what you end up with is a street that may not necessarily look better than what it looks like today, but it's really going to slow down the aging of that street, and I'm talking mostly of asphalt streets here. The preservation product I'm referring to specifically is a product that I've been dealing with the vendor, he's a sole-source vendor here in Texas, been dealing with him for the better part of two years now, and he followed me down to Friendswood. So it's called Reclamite, it's a maltein-based rejuvenator that penetrates the top few inches of asphalt, and it rejuvenates that asphalt, keeping it from becoming old and brittle. So I don't get too much more technical, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you one-on-one and explain what the product is and what our mindset is behind doing this right here. This type of work is done, best done after February, so we've got a few weeks away, and if we do go this route, preservation work would be completely separate of the $4 million that we already have set aside for the concrete and asphalt streets. Now we move on to the reconstruction of Black Hawk Boulevard. To date, the city has expended $3.9 million on this $4.5 million project. The majority of the Boulevard has been reconstructed, with the exception of a short section near Friendswood Link. At worst, we should expect that contractor to be finished with construction by the end of late March. However, I drove by there earlier today, and it looks like they're progressing a little faster than I anticipated, so it may not be too much longer before they're done. The reconstructed sections look outstanding, right smoothly, and one of the things I've really been impressed with with their concrete crews is that they did a really good job of ensuring that we didn't have any major bird baths, where locations that the gutter holds up water. Once the contractor finishes and submits his closeout documents, we'll be back to the council asking for acceptance so that the warranty period on this street will begin. Next, I wanted to let you know about the citywide traffic study and update that's being conducted over the course of the past year by Brown and Gay engineers, and I want to let you know it's nearing its conclusion. Engineering staff has sent back a list of comments and corrections that need to be made, and after those comments are incorporated, the study will be finished. This study analyzes the current mobility needs of the city of Friendswood, and it evaluates what the city's needs will be over the course of the next 20 years. The study makes recommendations for the city to improve mobility during a few different milestone years down the road, 2025, 2030, and 2040. Without getting too far ahead of the consultant, I did want to share with you that recommendations are made to begin with some signal optimizations throughout the city, which that shows the largest benefit to cost ratio, really cheap, and it makes a huge difference. Some of the other improvements that they're suggesting includes the lengthening of critical turn lanes, like what you've seen happen in front of HEB on 518. They've also, they're also suggesting providing additional turn lanes at key intersections to make, instead of just having one turn lane, have two turn lanes. And they're also suggesting the winding of some streets. We anticipate the consultant being here for the March council meeting to give you a little bit more in-depth analysis of all their findings. My next update is on the status of the reconstruction of lift station number 23, which is located near the intersection of FM 518 and Oak Drive. The contractor on this project has been given a notice to proceed of February 1st. We expect construction to take anywhere from nine to 12 months. We received the contractor's proposed schedule last week, and based upon that, they will be mobilizing by the middle of March. That's when we'll actually see some work going on out there. In the meantime, they'll be ordering parts and gearing up and everything, and they'll get the bypass pump set up and begin demolition soon thereafter. Also, I want to let you know that during the course of communicating with the contractor here lately, engineering staff learned that the vendors that supply pump and motor controls, odor control, and the generator would be unable to deliver these things to the contractor within the 180 days that were allowed in the contract. We only gave them 180 days, and they're already over with trying to provide us with what we asked for. So, and that wasn't too surprising to me, I've gone through it myself. We're rebuilding a wastewater treatment plant, had a really long lead time on some of that equipment myself as well. So with these things beyond his control, we asked the contractor if he'd be willing to reduce the overall cost of the project if we were to give him more time to contractually fulfill his obligations. I had a feeling that maybe in that price, there was a little bit of insurance built-in against punishments. And we're still finalizing details, but during the March council meeting, we should be coming to you for a change order, and that change order would be an amount of $100,000 back to the city in exchange for 150 days.
We'll take those change orders all day long, yeah.
And finally, I wanted to update you on a couple of things that some area agencies are doing. At the intersection of Beamer Road and FM 2351, Harris County has their project ongoing. They're fixing to get kicked off with the brunt of the work later on this month. Previously, they put in a water line under 2351, and now everything that they've ordered, the signals and stuff, all that is starting to come in, so they're going to be back at work later this month, is what they're telling us. So expect some delays there. They're going to be putting in some streets, or some road to bypass it, to help alleviate some of the traffic while they're doing construction, and then they'll reroute accordingly as they finish some of the work, so.
The temporary roads Hill's referring to will be removing the existing medians to provide some temporary pavement. The medians will come back once the project's done, but I would encourage folks to avoid that intersection in the AM and PM peak. Use Whispering Pines or use 528 as an alternate route.
Finally, the Texas Department of Transportation has some stuff ongoing along FM 518. The first is improvements of the medians, which we were told would be starting today. I haven't seen them out there, but that's what they told, that they'd be starting today. So the second is the survey work that is being done along 518 downtown. They look like they're going to be working on that for just a little bit longer, but this is the survey to provide information for the curb ramp, sidewalk, and traffic signal grant that the city's been awarded.
So is that why we saw those little orange flags in front of Friends Church?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly it.
Yeah.
So they'll be giving the survey back to the design engineer here soon. They're going to spend the rest of the year doing their design work. We may have to hunt down some easements right away, but they're going to be getting with us as we go. They're anticipating letting this project in 2021, so next year. And with that, do we have any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
I do have a question. Just for clarification, the latest contract that we've just entered for the next phase of the street work, is that $4 million, $4 million we've already collected off that sales tax, not that we anticipate collecting if it passes?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Any funds collected between now and the end of this calendar year will be put towards street as well, and assuming later on this evening y'all pass ordinance calling for the reauthorization of that street sales tax, the funds would continue if approved.
The money's in the bank.
For 2019 and 2020, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I was going to say, and now we're going to move on to the real reason why you're here. Our Deputy Director of Engineering, Samantha Heritoss, will be giving you an update on all things drainage-related. Samantha's only been here a few months, but already she's made her mark within and outside the organization. Just so you know, moving forward, we will have future capital improvement and drainage updates in separate meetings, and I'm asking that we do that so Samantha doesn't steal all my thunder.
Great job, Hill, thank you. Welcome, Samantha. By the way, I like these templates, they're really nice.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get everything formatted.
It looks really nice.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Samantha Heritoss, and I'm the Deputy Director of Engineering, and I'm here to talk about ongoing efforts we have for flood control, well mainly flood control projects at this point, but in the future, I'm sure drainage will be included as well. So I'm going to, I'm going to start this presentation talking about the various coordination and partnering efforts that we've been working on, because these are really crucial in making sure that we not only design projects but get them funded. So some of the partners that we've been working with here in the, in the recent past include, or even today, tomorrow, include Harris County, Galveston County, the Harris County Flood Control District, the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, Drainage District Number One. We have the ongoing federal study in the Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou where we're partnering with various drainage districts, counties, and cities, Pearland, Lake City, and other cities along the coast, and the Speed Center. So I'm going to go into a little more detail about what we've been working on with each of these partners. The first one is the Harris County Flood Control District. Hill and I recently went down there, and we talked to them, and asked them what would the city of Friendswood need to do in order to partner on projects with you guys? What specifically do you need from us? And they said that they would need a hydraulic and hydrology model, and it would have to show benefits. And benefits doesn't necessarily have to be structures, they had a list of things, it could be streets, they even had post-traumatic stress syndrome on there, I'm not really sure how you would quantify that, but they seemed really interested in partnering with us. And we specifically talked to them about two projects, which I'm in a prison on here in a few minutes. One was the Forest Bend Detention Project, which we recently received a community block development grant for, it was disaster recovery. And the other one is the Wickham Property. So I'll talk more about, you know, what, how we might be partnering with them when I get to those slides. Another effort that we recently made, we met with the Harris County Flood Control Meteorologist actually a couple of times, and we're looking at signing an inter-local agreement so we can install new stream gauges. So one of them is going to be at Dixie Farm Road and Clear Creek, and the other one is going to be, well, not for sure, they're going to look and see if there might be backwater effects that may negate the gauge working in this location, but they're going to look at the Turkey Creek and Beamer Road location. We talked about adding additional gauges while we were there, but the, we were informed that if the gauges are too close together, that it interferes with gauge readings, and some of the locations that we had identified were too close to Clear Creek, so when water backs up from Clear Creek onto those gauges, it's not really giving a meaningful reading. So we've also met several times with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, both in inter-agency meetings and in personal meetings. The big project that we're going to be working on them is one that we've been working on, but the scope is going to be expanded, it's the Imperial Estates Project. Originally, the, the area was identified as having around 250 acre-feet of detention, but they've already removed over 300 acre-feet, and they're saying they're only around 25% done with that project. So I'll talk a little more when I get to that slide about that project. Rice University, that's the Speed Center with Dr. Bediant, we will be going down there this week, and our goal there is to make sure that our partnership is strong, and that we in the engineering section, since we've had a lot of turnover, really understand everything that was done, and even things that weren't necessarily written in paper form, you know, we just kind of want to pick his brain, so we're on the same page, and we understand what he thinks the city's needs are, since he spent so much time setting the watershed. And then there, you know, there might be opportunities going forward where we can partner with the Speed Center. Galveston County, we've, we've talked with the county engineer, Michael Shannon, they are updating their master drainage plan right now, and they indicated that it's great timing to try and partner with them, maybe, you know, we need to set up some meetings, but there might be some overlapping interests, which would be really great for the city of Friendswood. The Houston-Galveston Area Council, we are looking to try and get a seat on that council, there's, there's several members from various counties and cities on the council, and they meet to discuss flood control issues in the Houston-Galveston area. Another, another benefit from being in that council is that they, they have lots of tools that they're developing to help with flood control, and they, they're, they're, one of their focuses right now is, is to help people so that when we apply to grants, we're all on the same page, and they're looking at developing tools specifically to do benefit cost analyses for those grants. And then the final partnering opportunity, I know I'm a little bit long-winded, but I'm really passionate about this stuff and I want to let you guys know everything that we're doing. Okay.
This is excellent.
Send one engineer to another.
So the
Probably I might add.
The Lower Clear Creek and the Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Federal Study is another great opportunity for the City of Friendswood. It's a federal study. The Galveston District Army Corps of Engineer is leading the study. And, and like I said previously, there are several local cities, drainage districts, and Harris County and Galveston County, they're, where they're looking at doing a regional study for the Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou. The first stakeholder meeting was on December 11th. They, they just started this meeting here in December. They're looking at in the next 18 months, from start to finish, getting a huge planning study that will hopefully identify specific projects that will help every, you know, everybody that's participating in the study deal with flooding issues along Clear Creek. And the public meetings are going to be announced soon. And, you know, the, the city, or we, we from engineering highly encourage citizens to attend those meetings and, you know, get your voice out there, let them know what our needs are and how severe the flooding here is.
The reason like last night at Mo's, when you brought up the HGAC, we do have folks who are on the HGAC board. So that's why I was wondering if there probably is some specific committee or something that you're looking for. So just after this, if you want to talk about it, just let me know what it is. Because we do have a Mo's actually on there as well, so.
I believe the committee is the Flood Mitigation or Flood Control Committee that they started last year. But we can discuss further.
So the, I'm going to go over the city staff agenda. This isn't really just engineering. This is for all sections of the, the city. But we're going to continue to identify partnering opportunities and really support those partnerships. We want to build strong, long-lasting partnerships. And that's going to be critical as we go forward and try to expend money and build projects. We want to become a repository for any models that have been done in the past on Clear Creek or its tributaries and any that are going forward because we want to make sure that we have a good, accurate, up-to-date model so that when we design these projects, it all makes sense for what's really out there. And in emergency management type situations, we can, you know, oh my gosh, a storm bigger than Harvey's coming. We can run it through that model while we're sitting there in emergency management so we can get out that information to all the citizens.
Samantha, may I ask you a question about the H&amp;H studies? Because I knew that Harris County was moving forward with us on Forest Bend and the Wickham Property and also some, some other projects. The H&amp;H studies, how much do we have to do to get that done? Doesn't a lot of that H&amp;H modeling come from the Bediant study that we paid for through Rice University? Or?
I'll, I will talk about that more specifically on some of the projects that I'm going to go over. But the, the study that Bediant did, did not look at specific projects. It was like, okay, let's see what terracing will do. If we terrace the whole creek 200 feet on either side or 400 creek on the other side. But in reality, you can't build that. There's real estate considerations, political considerations. There's environmental considerations. We have to look at where there's wetlands and where, if we design things where there's wetlands, it can be more expensive because we'll have to mitigate for that. So all of those factors come into consideration. And so I would call that more of a, a planning level study. And really, it's like an initial planning study. But when we are project-specific, we're looking at a design level study, something that we can go out there and construct. Oh, this detention basin is going to be this big and it's going to need, you know, a weir this big on it. So there's, you know, it's hard to explain if you're not an engineer, but I'll, I'll do my best to answer that question.
I'm following you.
Okay.
And, and I would like to add to Samantha's comments. By hiring Samantha, we have brought on a resident expert when it comes to modeling, hydraulic modeling. She is able to do some of this activity in-house, whereas before we had to go external and bring on a consultant, some of these activities she's able to run from her computer. So we've greatly enhanced our capabilities.
Well, time-wise, how long will it take us to get up to speed on our H&amp;H modeling? We're two and a half years into post-Harvey. So everybody's doing studies and every, we're working with League City on studies. I'm just asking for just a simple estimation.
I'm going to go ahead and continue with what I have and, and let's revisit that at the end because some of the studies I'm going to talk about may give you a better understanding of that.
Great.
Okay. So, um, so we're going to procure these models. We're going to keep a good model. And, and the final effort that we're working on, and this is department-wide, we want to make sure that our geographical information systems, I don't know if y'all have heard of ArcGIS. We have been using it to some extent, but we haven't really been maximizing the, the capabilities that it has. So once we get that up and running, we're going to be able to produce really great maps. It'll help emergency management situation. We can run, you know, flood scenarios and produce flood maps for all different kinds of situations. And once we get that and it's all interdependent, it'll be a really great thing for the city. Okay, I'm going to talk about, we, we kind of have a short-term agenda and then a long-term agenda for flood control. So the first three projects I'm going to talk about are, are short-term. Let me make sure this is on really quick. I was going to draw on here. Okay, it looks like it's on. Let me just do a test. Okay. Okay, so these are the three short-term projects. And we have several other projects identified, but you'll understand why I'm just focusing on these three as we, as we go forward. So the first one is the Imperial Estates Project, which I touched base on a little bit. We're going to be working with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District on that project. It's, it was originally scoped at around 250 acre feet. And they're thinking it could be as much as five times or more of capacity out there. The second one is the Forest Bend Detention Basin, which we recently received the Community Development Block Grant funding for of about three and a half million. And I'm going to talk about each of these in detail. I'm just trying to give you the big picture. And then the last one is the, the Wickham Clear Creek Community Church Property. And it would be a terracing project. So the Imperial Estates Project was originally around 250 acre feet. Their initial estimates were that it could be, you know, 1,200, 1,500 acre feet. They're not really sure how much. So one of our tasks here in engineering over the next few months is going to be to determine exactly how much additional capacity there is. And then in-house, we're going to do modeling so we can determine what benefits there are. So for this study, there will be no H&amp;H, you know, upfront costs. When it comes time for submitting the, the engineering and environmental studies, there will be some design costs as far as designing the plans. They may have to go back and maximize, you know, small things from when, when they go out and do extensive field visits. But the majority of it will be done in-house. And this one will, this one wants, uh, there's still opportunity to look at grants for this project. We haven't really determined the entire mechanism of how we're going to handle it. And we are still working on in-house cost estimates as well.
This is a collaboration with the Drainage District based upon the findings of Samantha and their engineer. We may have an updated interlocal agreement in the near term to council to consider partnering with them to dig more dirt out.
Okay. The next project is the Forest Bend Detention Project. Okay, so the original footprint for this, when we, when we applied for the grant, was for a 70-acre foot detention basin. Well, this whole area, I think there's a pole right there, so I don't, no, 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 it doesn't. It goes this way. The pole's over there. Okay, so this whole area is 17 acres. So we could actually put a much larger detention basin than a 70-acre foot detention basin out there. But the grant was only for about 70 acre feet. So while we were meeting with Harris County Flood Control District, it came to our attention, we knew that there were these two storm drains that run along here. But it turns out that Harris County Flood Control District owns the right-of-way. And another really great thing that these drains are there, we, we might be able to use them for an outlet for the detention basin so we could avoid any kind of permitting issues with the Army Corps of Engineers. So for, I have more notes on the next one. This project would also include lights and trails. So for this one, we, we are, we've already been discussing with a consultant. We will have to put a scope out for H&amp;H modeling or hydraulic modeling. And we're, we want them to model two alternatives. Nothing's signed yet. This is, you know, just what engineering is considering. The first one would be to design the detention for the footprint that we, you know, that the CDBG grant was awarded for the three and a half million. And that would be pretty much design level. So a study, a study, well, we're still working on, on getting the cost estimates. But I would guess that it's around 35,000, maybe 40,000 for just that component. The second alternative would be to maximize the project, probably look at doing inline detention along Clear Creek, maximize the area of the detention basin. And, um, and for that alternative, it's going to be more expensive. And the reason why is if we partner with Harris County Flood Control District, they have really strict regulations on what they want to see for us to partner. So to meet all of their requirements, this, this H&amp;H study suddenly becomes massively more expensive. So.
And the benefit of that is we have a grant opportunity with CDBG right now in Harris County, but it's limited to that three and a half million dollars. So if we just wanted to follow those rules and get a three and a half million dollar project done, we could. But it would not be nearly as effective as what, as what we'd like to see there. So the intent here is to find a way to optimize both the basin that CDBG approved as well as the potential to have terracing and inline detention adjacent to Clear Creek. So by partnering with Harris County Flood Control District, you're able to parlay that three and a half million that's not city dollars but into something that's potentially two or three times that amount of money with some other agencies funding and not the City of Friendswoods.
All right, with, with greater benefit, so.
Maximizing. That's awesome.
So the timeline for this, and this may change if we end up partnering with Harris County Flood Control District. But we're looking at, um, the environmental and engineering RFP would go out here in the spring and then probably a year later in spring 2021, construction would begin.
Samantha, could you go back to that map?
Go back to the
The map where you showed the 17 acres?
Yes.
Okay, you see where that undulation is in the creek? Now across from there is, which park is that across from that?
The park that's directly across from that is the Park Subdivision. It's directly across probably about another four or 500 feet. The little Oxbow area is property that's owned by Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District that they're already starting to shelf.
So we might, this part here, we might be able to to do inline shelving.
Yes.
And then this is the, the detention. Well, right now, our detention's probably to there. Now it just looks like a bunch of scribbles, but.
Well, I was just trying to also include that other part across there that's owned by Galveston.
So that, that other part is already being lowered substantially and the Drainage District's already at the construction level. So we, we're going to get the net benefit of that and we're going to try to quantify that, what's within the Oxbow and White right now, but.
I forgot to mention this earlier, but so we are, we are planning on meeting with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. They're going to take us on a site visit and tell us, you know, all the projects they're working on. And then I think I have them talked into sending someone over here so we can sit down in front of a computer, draw it all on a map, like both existing and proposed projects. And, and then, well, like that, that model that I was talking about, keeping a good base model, as these projects get built in-house, we'll add them to that model. So our model is up to date and showing what's out there.
And I think they cut a high overflow pass that goes right straight under 528 right there.
They did. Yes, sir.
So I know that's looking really good over there and I'm excited about what you're doing for the full footprint too. So that, that makes a lot of sense.
Do you, are you, have you started to work on the other CDBD grants, like the mitigation? Excuse me, like the mitigation, all that? Are you starting to tap into that?
Well, this, this grant actually was applied for over a year ago. So we're like, you know, things move very slowly in, in our world. But we, we, so we are looking at mitigation grants, but I'm not even really talking about those projects today. That's going to be at the Bond Retreat where we have, you know, I have, or not, we, we have about 10 projects that we have identified and, and that's when we'll really start looking at those. But I'm just trying to let you know, you know, what we have closer to designing and building.
I understand that. I just want to make sure you're, because that's where all the big money is or something.
Yes, sir.
We have a billion in that one or something.
And the, the short answer to the question is, we did evaluate it. I know the action, the state action plan was recently published. Our staff did review it and comment on the initial publication. The four and a half billion is going to be allocated, much like the first four billion that was allocated. And it's going to go through an HGAC-type council and be, and develop a method of distribution. I imagine cities and counties are going to get allocations. They're not going to get an opportunity to apply for the whole thing.
Another, another, so this, the, the regional Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou study that we're partnering on, so they went back and amended. Originally, a city could only, or, or an entity could only apply three times and that included on a regional scale. But now you can apply both for your city separately for three projects and on three regional projects. So there may be some opportunities that come out of that study that would utilize that fund as well. But yeah, we're, you, you know, like we have several projects where we'll be considering those grants. We're just, we're just trying to wrap up things that were already kind of in the works.
You know, I think what you're doing is fabulous and I'm, I'm really thrilled with the progress so far. So you're doing fine.
Okay. So the, the last, did I cover, yeah, I did that. Okay, so the last project on our short-term agenda is the Clear Creek Community Church or Wickham Property. This is the property right here. Harris County Flood Control is, the district is interested in partnering with this one, or partnering on us with this one if we can show benefits. They do own the right-of-way along this, I don't know if it's a ditch or a channel. They own the right-of-way right here though, so.
It's a 200-foot wide drainage channel.
Okay. And so the, the area that we're talking about, they would be terracing the maximum extent between the creek, well, that kind of blocks it, and the floodway that they could. And, um, and then just of note, the, this, this picture here where I'm pointing, that shows that there are wetlands on this property. They're close to the channel, so we will have to expect some type of mitigation with this project. It'll, it'll have to go through the Army Corps permitting process and we'll have to have inline and possibly separate wetland mitigation. So that will add some to the expense of the project. We, um, we are discussing with a consultant to do modeling for this project. And this one would just be one alternative, looking at maximizing the area. But of course, we'll have them look at benefits and we will want that scope to go through Harris County Flood Control District to make sure it meets all of their qualifications before we sign off on it on our end.
There is an MOU later on this evening under the consent agenda in which the Clear Creek Community Church is agreeing to allowing us to do this exploratory study. Based on the findings of it, they're already committing to dedicating the right-of-way necessary or in an easement form to getting this project accomplished.
That's on our consent agenda, right?
That's on consent, yes.
Yeah, I have that one there. Another, another feature about this project, so even though wetland mitigation is anticipated, the church is interested in taking some of the fill. And if you look back on that picture, it's not all in the floodplain or the hundred-year. So that might help in our disposal fees for the excavation of the material. Okay, so the last thing I'm going to talk to you about tonight, we are really excited about this shortly before Christmas. We found out that there is a fund of money. It's the Flood Infrastructure Fund through State Proposition 8. They've set aside $8 million. And a planning study such as a master drainage plan would be fully funded under this, um, under this study. And a master drainage plan for the City of Friendswood, like, I, I know there's been master drainage plans before, but this study would look at both flood control projects along Clear Creek and its tributaries and any areas where we've identified that there might be street flooding issues. And so that's, it's changed a lot since the last master drainage plan was done because Harvey's come along and we're really concerned about Clear Creek. So this is, this is, so why this is so critical? We've had, we had the Bediant study. This is also a planning study, but it's going, we are hoping that specific projects This is also a planning study, but it's going, we are hoping that specific projects will be identified in this study. So, and it'll, it's on the next slide, but it's going to take, it's going to take into account real estate, it's going to take into account where we would have mitigation due to environmental impacts. Or if the project caused any increase in water surface downstream, sometimes you have to put a we're in to account for that. And it's going to, um, it would provide a benefit cost assessment and include that H and H component of modeling. So that would all be funded in this study. So we would be ready, once this was done, to go talk to Harris County Flood Control District and say, here, we have this project, here's the benefit cost assessment. And then, you know, we could, it would be surpassing a bunch of steps. In the long run, it's going to be much more expensive for us to assess each of these projects individually than if we had a master drainage plan. So, let me see if I skipped anything.
That's real good news.
No, okay, so, uh, the, the grant for this, we are going to use a consultant. And the reason why, the first component of, of this application is small, but this, and it's, and it's not that expensive. But the second portion of the application is a huge binder. So, um, the other reason is that the consultant that we are talking with has somebody who's served on the Texas Water Development Board for forty years. And so he knows the ins and outs of how to do these Texas Water Development Board applications. It's, you know, that's what he's done for a living. So with ta, with talking to this consultant, they think that we have an excellent chance of getting funded. They've taught, they've gone down there, they've talked firsthand to people on the Texas Water Development Board. The Texas Water Development Board is very interested in providing planning money for any coastal communities that had damage during Harvey. So we've got a really good shot at this and, and this would be really great, it would, in the long run, save us a lot of money. Um, so I'm just gonna, the, I, we, we have identified several other of these smaller projects, but they're not as far along in the planning stage as the ones I talked about tonight. So going forward, you know, we'll, we'll start talking more about those projects, but we're still trying to get the total cost estimate together for those projects. And, and still looking at what types of grants they might be eligible for, so, but that will come. Okay, any questions?
I have a box of studies of Clear Creek and Friendswood at my house from when we had the committee, I'll be happy to drop those off for you.
That would be great. And, and, and actually, when we, whenever we have this master drainage plan done, that would be so valuable for them.
Yeah, I just threw them all in a box and I still have them all, so.
Better quality output we'll have. Okay.
Any other questions? Great job, Samantha, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
If you would like, since, uh, it's almost seven o'clock, we can put the executive session later on in the agenda, if that's helpful from a timeline perspective. We do have Derek Mitchell here from Scenic City for the recognition item.
Sounds excellent.
Doc Strand's here as well.
And Doc Strand as well, sorry, Doc.
He's, he's standing out in the lobby.
Talking to chief, sorry, Doc.
Well, I think we have a birthday girl at the podium. Aubrey?
It's Aubrey's twenty-ninth birthday today, so if y'all can join, we'll be wishing her a happy birthday. So this evening, we have Derek Mitchell with Scenic City Houston here to, uh, present to the city of Friendswood our recent platinum designation of Scenic City.
All right.
Welcome.
Mayor, pro tem and city council, I'm happy to be here. As Mo said, I'm the, um, media past president or chairman of the board for Scenic Houston, which is one of the, uh, member organizations for Scenic Texas. And so it's my pleasure to come today to present you with your Scenic City certification. We do this around the state, but it gives us pleasure where we can, uh, give you the platinum award and the platinum certification. And it starts with your staff, well, it starts with your leadership first, to say that it's important to the city, um, that you have this certification. But then your staff, they've worked really hard, I think Aubrey and, um, the rest of her team, city, Becky and assistant city manager. And then it, it ends, probably starts and ends with your city attorney, just to make sure the ordinances that you have passed, um, that require certain, certain, um, billboards and signage throughout the, uh, the city are, are legal. And so it takes a village in this case. So anyway, I won't talk too much, but just want to say congratulations, uh, a job well done. Most of the cities start with bronze and typically never get to platinum, so, uh, good job on, on making that happen.
I may add, we skipped, uh, silver and gold and went straight to platinum from bronze.
You didn't just go for the gold, went for the platinum.
Went for the platinum. So I, in this case, it stood to say, well, you know, you'll do better next job, I'm just going to say, keep up the good work.
Derek, we appreciate you being here this evening and congrats Aubrey and Becky and Stephen and Mo and Mary Kay and everybody. Is there a plaque somewhere?
Yeah, you have your.
Very nice, very nice. All right, is Doc's?
Yeah, we should be nice, I want to get a five-minute break and then we'll.
You want to take a, yes.
So what's council's wish, Doc Strand or?
Let's do Dr. Strand. He's right there.
Doc Strand is standing right there, is that okay?
Yep, come on, Doc.
All right, come on, Doc, we voted you in, come on up. Thank you, Doc Strand.
Animal Control Center in, uh, two thousand nineteen was another fantastic year. You have the figures in front of you, I'm sure, eighteen, roughly eighteen hundred calls, uh, ninety percent release, live release rate. A hundred and eighty-three pets were returned back to their owners without even getting to the center because of the microchip program, that's working really well. Two hundred and seventy-one pets were returned, or adopted, I should say. Under the leadership of the, uh, Police Department, Lieutenant Wise, Officer Robert E. Lee, who was also now president of the Texas Animal Control Centers for a year or so, so we're doing really well. I think we're now like the, uh, the center everyone's trying to aspire to. It's wonderful, it's great to be part of a good organization and that's about it. Questions?
Good job.
Good job, thank you, Doc Strand.
Thank you very much, guys.
Appreciate you. All right, and now you at least have a short break, we'll reconvene at seven o'clock.
Eight dollars to the city for infrastructure projects. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development allocated the, the state of Texas five point zero-two-four billion in CDBG DR funding through the Texas General Land Office. Of which the HGAC has developed a mod to allocate more than two hundred and forty million of funding to local cities.
It's after this.
After this, yeah, it's number ten. Brian, welcome.
Thanks.
So nice to see you.
Thanks for having me back. I know that I've been here about, about five times over the CBBG stuff, but we're going to do it one more time at least.
Sounds good.
So, uh, we are having a public hearing, there is a little bit change in the application, that's why we had to come back to this format. It's up there now. You read a lot, you read a lot of it off, but there was an award made for the CBG HUD, that over five million, it was allocation to the region. It was one for Houston, or for the Harris County region and one for Galveston. The one specifically tonight will be that we're talking about Galveston County. We did previously submit, uh, infrastructure, just, uh, on a good note, that we were one of the first ones in the area for us, for Galveston County to submit those plans, which is good for us. Uh, and good for hopefully going forward, we're getting those awarded at some point. With doing that, a lot of preliminary, trying to get those out very quickly and all, not doing a lot of the deep assessments that Samantha was talking about. So with that being in mind, as we were going through this process, there was a further assessment done to see if one of the projects was going to be able to be work for us. And unfortunately, because of change in flood maps and some other things, it's not going to work out. So with that being said, we had to change that, uh, we had to change that application. But fortunately, uh, the GLO was gracious and allowing us to do that and then change our application, you know, a year into it. We just had to go through some of these formalities today, bring it to you again and have another public meeting, those kind of things. So just real quick to touch base, if we go back, CBBR, it's the Community Block Grant Disaster Recovery. And a lot of the stuff you got earlier in the previous session, but we got the Houston-Galveston Area Council, our method of distribution is the mod and LMI, the Low to Moderate Income. So, uh, the HGAC, this is for the Gauss County, we had that, the two hundred, the, 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 the two hundred and forty million. And then under this mod, we had the, the two point six for the infrastructure and we have another two point seven for the buyouts and acquisitions. I'm not going to be bringing, uh, tonight, we're not going to talk about the, the buyouts acquisitions, there's no change in those projects, just as a matter of update. The main thing we're looking back on is we're waiting for is the LMI to meet. So on the Harris County side, we already got the, hopefully get the awards in the next couple of months. We've already kind of preliminary, got the notice that we're going to proceed for those Harris County ones, the ones that Samantha was talking about. We're waiting for, um, notice from Gauss and County that they're going to be able to meet the LMI before we can proceed with any of our other projects. So that's kind of where the buyouts and acquisitions are at right now, they're in that phase, they're waiting for other applications to come in and to see where the LMI is going to fall.
So when you're talking about that, you're saying it's the fifty percent or the seventy percent, when you're talking about where the LMI is going to fall?
The seventy, so they have to meet the seventy before we can get the piece of the thirty.
Okay, gotcha.
This is the, for round one of the disaster recovery funds, round two is the mitigation dollars that were discussed previously, um, the round one is under the seventy.
Okay.
All right, and kind of like Samantha mentioned, this is, we came to you originally, I think it was December of eighteen. So over a year ago, we started this process, application, had a public meeting, so it's been back and forth quite a bit, so it's a long process. Just real quick, some of the things that are eligible, the things that we've already done is the flood control, the drainage, uh, one of those projects is going to be for flood control, restoration of publicly-owned infrastructure, demo reharm or construction of publicly-owned commercial, um, buildings and for code enforcement. Things we can't do is dams, levees, uh, privately-owned utilities for that kind of, for privately-owned purposes. Or, um, those that are not, are general use of conduct, uh, general conduct of government, courthouses, EOCs, stuff like that. So the one that's the same that before, there is a little cost adjustment in that, is a deepwater flood control project. This will be tied in with us being able to attain the acquisition for those properties, um, and doing terrace and shelving and then off, off a deepwater, close to where the old, um, public works was at. The new project, they tie these together, the new project will be the burial of the utility lines crossing Clear Creek. That's kind of back behind Poly Ranch area. There's three, there's three lines that are currently crossing over. The goal would be to be able to bury those, so we wouldn't have any issues in the future. Right now, there is some issues with the bulk, or with, where they tie into the, the surface there, they're starting their road. We're going to have to make some minor repairs, the hopes is that we'll be able to bury them and not have that before. Also, they can cause issues for, um, catching debris and stuff when high water comes in as well.
It's on the screen, but to add to that, by burying the lines, we're also able to pursue a future terrace and shelf at that location, whereas the configuration that's currently there, you would not be able to do that.
We had a citizen talk to us about this a few months ago, right? Was this the thing?
Correct, yes.
Any questions about the project?
Sounds great.
And then just to kind of reiterate on the LMI, the seventy percent and the requirements we have to meet. Fortunately, Harris County is a little bit bigger, they've been able to meet those requirements, so that we'll be able to proceed with some of those projects. We're still waiting on the answer back on the Gauss County side. Just kind of, just so you know, that, uh, this application has been out since December twentieth, public has had an opportunity to comment on it. We did receive three comments, uh, we're just going to bring those up real quick before anybody else comes up, if there is anybody. One was a request to put, um, sidewalks on wellness trails. Unfortunately, that, uh, funding doesn't allow for us to do that, uh, that's not one of the sources, uh, it wasn't damaged by Harvey, Harvey, that area wasn't. So what I did will use this, this money towards that project. Another one was just, everything looks great, thanks for doing it, you're doing a good job type deal. And the third was in regards to the terracing, to make sure that when we do bury them, that we leave enough room for the terracing. And, uh, engineering has looked at that to make sure that the grade will allow for that. That's in a nutshell, but I have them here if we need to do more, so. And public comment specifically in regards to, uh, the application.
Correct, so if there's anybody here tonight that wants.
Is there anyone, you have a public comment, Steve? Is there anyone here who has public con, Phil Radesso?
Mayor, pro tem, council, staff, uh, here that, as you probably know, well know, our, uh, citizens advisory team group has stayed together. And we are very involved in the, in this stuff, we have met with staff several times on, on this. But this is an excellent opportunity for the city and probably one of the perfect things these grants are for is to take care of these things without impacting the local money that we get the big, uh, federal dollars in to do this, so that we can use our money to do the other projects that help our citizens. This is, uh, typically an infrastructure project, it grades, it dovetails into it, it, it's, the citizens should fully support it and we all support it. We've met with them, we love the idea, we, they've taken into account the, uh, the need to bury them away, to allow the shelving there. Excellent deal, fully supported, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, that's it.
So tonight, you will see a resolution to replace the previous resolution on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So now this closes our public hearing? All right, and now, we do have a card, I'm so sorry to make you all sit through this the first time, but I have to read it a second time now. Communications from the public, to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against the city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge, cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. John, you have any words of wisdom for us? All right, David, I think you know the drill, David Allen.
David Allen, two fourteen Inwood.
They're fighting over who had the cards, David, sorry.
David Allen, two fourteen Inwood and Friendswood, and can everybody hear me? Okay. It's because I know there's a lot of heavy rollers here in, in the room tonight that I'm saying this, maybe you know someone that can help out in this situation, but here, here's what it is. I handed this out also, of course, beside you guys, um, many of you here have this, this, uh, there's two pages to this. This is about the virus that's spreading in China right now and they're having the, uh, embargoes and everything. That was in the city of Wuhan, which has a level four bioweapons lab, research lab in it. And if you look down at the bottom of the first page, a very prestigious Indian, you know, medical type university did a computer scan of the virus, those microbiologists and all, and they said it is definitely an engineered virus with aids on the front end of it that helps it enter the cells. And then a viral pneumonia body that, uh, it does a lot of damage to the heart and lungs if it doesn't kill you. And you can find that on newswars.com, newswars.com is good for alternative news that is actually well researched. So first page, Wuhan, that's what happened in China, apparently, I mean, I know they say they ate rats and bats and all that stuff, but I, I believe them, I was in China seven times in two thousand and six and seven, and they do that stuff. But that doesn't cause this, the bio-engineered, uh, virus. Now, the second thing is, I, several years ago, on the front page of the county paper, um, there was a picture of a guy, or gal, I don't know, in a big rubber suit with a kind of a big rubber vacuum cleaner and said, "We have a level four bioweapons lab here on Galveston Island, probably on Pelican Island, it's at UTMB. And if anything ever escapes from there, we're going to send out this person in this rubber suit with this big rubber vacuum and they'll take care of it." It's ridiculous, okay? And so this is a two thousand and five article from when the funding was approved for the bioweapons lab that we have, uh, at UTMB in Galveston. And, uh, says here, uh, And says here, and this is from Sid Rapp, Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy. Bio level four is secure for work with dangerous and exotic agents that pose a high individual risk of aerosol transmitted laboratory infections and life-threatening diseases. Okay? Down at the bottom, "The Galveston National Laboratory is the first complex of its size and scope undertaken in the United States on an academic campus in a resort area." What's it doing in a resort area? Next to the fourth largest city. Okay, this should be, I just drove my son, thank you, across Texas, he's moving out west, about as far as you can go. And believe me, there's a lot of open areas in Texas where this lab belongs. So, the point is, if any of you guys know UTMB board members or whatever, get this thing the heck out of our resort island and away from our city. And you know, the dedicated microbiologists, they understand they need to be safe, and they need to do that, you know, somewhere in the middle of the state, not here. So, that's the point. And there's your data. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Next up, Marad, our city manager's report.
Yes, ma'am. I will be brief. As council may recall, about two Saturdays back, on January 18th, Keep Friendswood Beautiful and the Parks and Recreation Department held their annual tree giveaway. Residents were lined up as early as 6 o'clock in the morning to get one of the 200 trees that were available for free for our residents that are here in Friendswood. All 200 trees were gone within 30 minutes. We also had Justin Estopinol with Friendswood Firewood on hand to give pointers on how to take care of these trees so that they flourish in, in our great city. A big thank you to Keep Friendswood Beautiful and our Parks and Rec Department, they did a marvelous job with this program. With regard to Hurricane Harvey update, I mentioned where we received the Hazard Mitigation Grant for acquisition, the buyout acquisition for 14 or so properties. That's continuing right as we speak. We have closed on three of the 14 in the last two weeks, with the others slated to be done shortly thereafter. With respect to our Texas Water Development Board Flood Mitigation Assistance Buyout Application, we did receive word about two weeks ago that FEMA has obligated funding for this, so we are going to receive that grant. There were four properties included on that buyout application. CDBG Disaster Recovery, we had already mentioned it earlier tonight, both in Samantha and Brian's presentation, so I won't go over that again. With regard to Gauss County, we're still waiting on word on their flood mitigation projects for the CDBG D R. On the FEMA side, we're still working closely with them on the Deepwood properties, getting that project final out. We have another conference call coming up this next Monday, hopefully that we can get a final resolution on those efforts. Lastly, it's not on the city manager's report, but I did want to mention, this past Saturday, the city of Friendswood was recognized by the Friendswood Chamber of Commerce. We received the Business of the Year Award, mainly in part to recognize Friendswood's 125th anniversary. A big thank you to the chamber and everybody involved basically on making Friendswood what it is. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion and possible action. Stephen, you want to elaborate on A for us?
So, Mayor Protem, council, good evening.
Real quick, before you go, can we get a motion in a second?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So, discussion and possible action regarding approving an economic development agreement with Coastal Bend Property Development LP and contractors.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. This item here is for 2,300 feet of eight-inch water line. I recall Hill mentioned earlier that Harris County had bought a water line across 2,351 at Beamer. This takes up from that endpoint and runs another 2,300 feet on the southwest side of the Friendswood city limit side of Beamer Road. It is an economic development agreement. It will open up a, the frontage with water service all the way down to the, I believe to the Florida Line business down there on Beamer. They'll be able to connect. This will be for the city to participate, it'll be the tune of about $123,000. And just so for everyone's knowledge, the developer will also be in on this as well. They're putting up about a, but they are putting up $100,000.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. B, discussion and possible action regarding approving an interlocal corporation, cooperation, excuse me, contract with Texas Department of Public Safety, Galveston County, for Failure to Appear Program of the Friendswood Municipal Court.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Oh, there's Katina.
Well, just a brief update, yeah, well, I'll let Katina do it. Sorry.
Weren't you just done to come up here and talk to us, Katina?
Sure, anytime, absolutely. Since 2004, the city has participated in the Failure to Appear Program through Galveston County. And so, to continue that program, it's a warrant search, and, and so, if we don't continue the agreement, we wouldn't be able to participate in that program, and thus, it could negatively impact our fines through our municipal court, so.
Mo, do you have additional comments?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Katina? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions. Resolution number 2020-01, I'd love to say that. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Designating the Mayor as the City's Representative in Seeking Eligible Grant Funds Under General Victim Assistance Direct Services Program, and Authorizing the Submission of Such Grant Application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Gov, excuse me, Office of the Governor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2020-02. A resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Authorizing Aerial Spraying Over Friendswood by the Galveston County Mosquito Control District for the Countywide Mosquito Control Program.
Motion to approve.
We all want mosquitoes dead. Can you just say, "Everybody approve now"? Do I have a second?
I bet it's unanimous.
Any discussion? Mo, you want to say anything about this?
Briefly, this is for aerials. This is for aerial spraying over the Gauss County side of Friendswood. The Harris County side does not do any spraying unless there's a confirmed West Nile virus case. The city of Friendswood does supplement with our trucks spraying the Harris County side of the city when we do our parks and other public facilities.
All righty. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2020-03. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Amending and Replacing Resolution Number 2019-24 with this resolution, Authorizing and Approving the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Designating Authorized Officials and Approving and Implementing a Citizen Participation Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? You're off the hook, Brian, thank you. Ordinances. Ordinance number 2020-01, Second and Final Reading of Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 97-20. Ordinance number 2000-06. Ordinance number 2003-17 that adopted and amended Municipal Court Building Security Fund and Municipal Court Building Technology.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 2020-03. Second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix B subdivision ordinance, Section 3.K.3 sidewalks, to add exceptions to sidewalk requirements for existing residential subdivisions. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number T 2020-04. Second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, Section 7, Schedule of District Regulations, Section 7.5, Community Overlay District and Section 8.N.D. Downtown District Supplemental Requirements to Change Building Material Requirements Per House Bill 2439. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have just one quick question on this, and I had talked to Councilman Rocky a little earlier too, and he kind of assured me it wouldn't be the case. But if we build with national code standards that aren't what we really want, but they can build it anyway, in two or three years from now, if I have a commercial building that's built with that, and my tenant's there, and then the state legislature comes back and they, and they, they do away with that, and they give us more authority on what kind of building materials are. If my tenant moves out and I get a new tenant comes in and says, "Hey, I want you to renovate this, I want to move into this spot," is the city going to come after them then and say, "Okay, I'm not going to give you a certificate of occupancy unless you up your codes to exactly what the new building want"? If they build it the way that the national code says now, will we come in there and say, "Hey, now you've got to update your facade and everything"?
So, if, if they end up building, say, an example, a metal building on, you know, 518?
Right.
And in two years, the legislature changed the rules back, and we can add our, you know, requirements back in to prohibit metal structures?
Yeah.
That building would then become a non-conforming structure.
Okay.
It would be allowed to remain. The only way they would lose their nonconformity, if it's vacant for 12 months or more, if it's destroyed more than 50%, they would just have to build back under our current codes.
So, and if a tenant comes back in and says, "Hey, I want you to renovate some of this," okay, just to get him in there, and I want that place rented, he's got to get a fire marshal to come out there and do this. Everybody gets a stamp at him?
Yes.
Okay? And then, we're not going to go in there and say, "Okay, you now have to come up to code"?
No, sir.
Okay.
No. It was just life, it would be life safety items, just for a tenant change.
That was what I needed to hear, thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
But any additions would have to be.
As a non-conforming use.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you were going to add on to the building after all of this changed back, the addition to the building would have to be to the new standard. And would they require the existing building?
But the existing would, could stay as is. Only the new addition would have to be built to the new.
So, if you had a thousand square foot facility, and you add 500 square feet to it, the 500 additional square feet would have to comply with the new regulations, the existing thousand wouldn't have to be changed at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number T 2020-05. Second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C. I didn't already read this, did I? Sounds just like the one above. Appendix C zoning, Section 3, Provision for Official Zoning Map to Update and Adopt the Official Zoning Map of the City, Incorporating Approved Changes in District Boundaries and Other Matters Portrayed on the Official Zoning Map. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number T 2020-06. First and final reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Calling for the Holding of a General Election on May 2nd, 2020, for the Purpose of Electing Two Councilmember Positions Number Two and Five, Ordering a Runoff Election on January 13, 2020, if necessary, and Making Other Provisions Related to the Subject.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No, ma'am? Did I not read it correctly?
Just runoff on June 13th.
Oh, what did I say?
I think you said...
January? Oh, sorry. June 13, 2020, sorry.
Do I amend my motion?
No.
My apologies. All right. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Ordinance number T 2020-07. First and final reading and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Calling for the Holding of a Special Election on May 2nd, 2020, for the Purpose of Reauthoriz, ugh, Reauthoriz, I can't even say it, Reauthorizing the Local Sales and Use Tax at the Rate of 3/8 of 1 cent to Continue Providing Revenue for Maintenance and Repair of Municipal Streets and Making Other Provisions Related to the Subject.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Would you like to make a comment about this?
Just reiterating what we discussed earlier, the amount of funds that the city's collected related to streets.
This is where the $4 million that we currently have to spend on streets came from. All right. All those in favor? None opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance number T 2020-08. First reading of an ordinance granting to Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp., DBA, Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas Operations, the right privilege and franchise to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public right of way of the City of Friendswood, Texas, for transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of natural gas, providing for a term of 30 years. Do you have a motion?
I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to highlight that Mary Kay saved us a whole bunch of money by bringing this to us, like over $100,000, correct?
This will increase the franchise fee that Centerpoint will pay for gas services in the city, and it will increase the annual amount by about $113,000.
Thank you, Mary Kay.
Awesome.
All those in favor? None opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance T 2020-09. First and final reading of an ordinance amending City of Friendswood, Texas, Ordinance Number 2019-38, Passed and Approved October 7, 2019. Same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 by approving Budget Amendment 3 to the original general budget of the City of Friendswood, Texas, for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. All right. Now I know why Mike gets tired of reading all that. All righty. Communications from the mayor and council members. Brent, would you like to start us off?
I just want to say, thanks for the reports that the engineering department gave us. They were very informative, very, I think everybody hopefully gets to take a look at these around the city, and I just want to thank you all for all those...
John? Robert?
I'm good.
Trish?
Yes, I do. I'd like to give a shout out to Keep Friendswood Beautiful. I attended their committee meeting this past week with a great group of volunteers that work really hard for our city, and they have just recently received two grants from HEB, one from the corporate office, for a total of $6,500. And they will be enhancing Stevenson Park with the Ferry Trail. And so, I'm giving a little commercial. They'll be here in April to, to talk about everything they've done for the year, and I'm sure they will talk about the Ferry Trail then. It's going to be educational, it's going to be an amazing thing. They have artists coming in, they have people that are building the ferry houses that will be attached to the trees. They have different themes, each one of the houses have a different theme, so children will be able, or adults will be able to stop by and look at them and read about it. And it's, it's really a neat, really a neat thing, and I can't wait for them to come in April and tell you about it. They're going to unveil it and open it to the public at the first part of June, so hope you'll all be there. That's it. And congratulations to the city, sorry, congratulations to the city staff that worked so hard, and it was nice to have that honor for y'all, and it's also nice to start that celebration for 125 years that way, so congratulations. celebration for 125 years that way, so congratulations.
Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to remind everybody that Ann Whitaker, who has been on the board of the Historical Society, I think since Friendswood started, but at least for 20 years, and she's been our president for the last 10, is retiring, both from the board and from being the president. And next Tuesday at 6 o'clock in the library, there will be a reception in her honor, and anybody and everybody is welcome. I wanted to thank Mo and the city, we talked last week about the tripping hazards out here in the parking lot, and I saw they're already fixing it today. And the last thing is, if you want to see me in my theatrical show, I will be paying a drunk poet, and fortunately, I'm not on stage a lot, the rest of the cast is outstanding. The play is called August, Osage County, it is literally the best play I've ever seen. Very dramatic. It's got humor, it's got a lot of dysfunction, and, and it's definitely an adult play, and it's the female characters who have all the body lines, so. It starts not this weekend, but the following weekend at the Purple Box Theater, so.
Well, I just want to thank my fellow council members and city manager's staff. Our mayor gets back day after tomorrow, and I'm so excited. But I want to thank all of y'all for being supportive this evening, I appreciate that very much. And with that, we will go into executive session, and Mo's motioning me something.
Real quickly.
Oh, consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. Honorable Mayor Protem and council, I would like to pull from the Agenda C, I just have a couple of quick questions on it, and before we vote on it, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. Is that okay with everybody?
So we'll pull C off of the consent agenda.
Correct. And you'll need to vote on A through the others.
All those in favor of A through, oh, you need to amend your...
I'll amend my motion to approve the consent agenda excluding C.
I'll amend my second.
All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. Now, item C, approving memorandum of understanding with Clear Creek Community Church to define limits and perform drainage modeling of the possible drainage projects, so a motion?
I move to approve.
And a second?
I second.
And now we can discuss.
Let's discuss. Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions. There is the benefited property and the, and the burdened property. Okay, the burdened property and the, actually, some of the property, it has two pipelines running through it, the Genesis Pipeline and the Texas Pipeline, are those active pipelines? Do we know?
I believe that they are active pipelines, but those prob, pipelines are closer to the 528 corridor, and further away, they obviously will be impacted adjacent to the creek, and if they're shallow enough, would have to be lowered in elevation. There's also a forest main that runs parallel to Clear Creek throughout the Woodcombe property. That particular forest main, though, is about 28 feet deep, so hopefully that will not be impacted.
Won't be impacted, okay, well, in the Exhibit B, there's a .094 acre easement, sewage easement for, and it's non-exclusive for the burdened property, and it's for the exclusive benefit of the benefited property. Now, the church is, I am assuming, the benefited property?
Correct.
Okay, now that easement is crossing that pipeline, there, it's actually going over the top of the pipeline, and I don't know how the church, I know it's a special warranty grant of easement, so I know they're only warranting it through themselves, how are they granting the right to go over that easement?
They've gotten the pipeline company's authorization to do that.
All right, that's all I needed to know.